Let me know if that looks okay.
Okay.
I'm not good with pictures.
Three tanks are ten dollars apiece.
First one's free.
Perfect. Alright, I will give that back. Oh, do you wanna?
Um.
I, she's got it to make it, yep. Alright, thank you guys.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would you like a hard copy or is it scanned? Okay. Um, I can do either way. What did you do? I'll do both.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That works. Thank you.
To everyone in the form, I'm going to call to be in Dover and then I'm going to take a motion to amend the agenda to include the proclamation for human slavery and trafficking.
Our motion?
Prevention, thank you.
A motion to approve the amended agenda.
And I'll second that.
Second. Alright. Uh, I'll take it. Uh, we'll do a vote on this. Uh, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 At the same time, motion okay. Now I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Anyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At the same time, motion okay. Okay.
One minute. For the minute.
Did I forget the minute?
Yeah.
Alright. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Sorry, second.
Well, I'll say it.
Moving second. There's no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At the same time, motion okay. Alright, sorry about that. Usually get it done.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Nope. Okay, Rich.
Not much today. I know we've got some weather coming back in on Tuesday, Wednesday. I'll inform you guys of the incident we had over last week. The other thing on the agenda is, um, I've got Rob Patterson here from the DNR. I think I mentioned this guy too, maybe. I don't know. At least last year, there was something about these twin pipe underneath Grouse and Elk Creek. Right now, they function. But, uh, I think, uh, Rob gave us a little bit more information on, they'd, they'd like to put mock culverts in for better control.
Yeah, I'll just take a quick second to introduce myself too. Um, like I said, my name's Rob Patterson. I'm the new biologist. Um, Mark and I have met, maybe some of you other in the past too, but I've been the one kinda in charge of managing state and, um, state property and we work with the federal property, the federal, especially Wildlife Service on their properties too. So, things that have to do with, uh, public hunting areas, waterfall production areas, or just wildlife and habitat in general, you guys can forward questions to me. Mark definitely has my phone number and looking forward to working with you guys in the future. But, this project here, yeah, there's, uh, those twin pipes that go under Grouse Avenue, those also function as our water control structure for that marsh going up to there. There's this, there's some stoplogs on the front side of that. And, um, we're pursuing a federal grant to replace and work on all the infrastructure up through that whole Elk Creek system. It's gonna be a, you know, million and a half dollar project, I think it is, but for the purposes of this project, it's focusing on those two culverts under the road. I think they're like nine footers, aren't they, Rich?
Pretty big. I haven't been out there to measure them, but they're sizable.
I walked on them this fall and didn't even think about hitting my head, so, uh, they're pretty tall.
They're pretty good, so it's, it's hard for me.
Yeah. Yeah. So, they are in decent shape. I mean, they're not brand new by any means, but, uh, we'd like to replace, work with the county to replace those with concrete culverts. And, um, as a part of that, you know, we'll put the concrete culverts under the road. They'll match the size of the ones that are in there now. We'll put new stoplog bays. It's just, it's a project for us to easier manage it, for us to get in there and do what we have to do easier. And it's a good opportunity for us to partner together and put some infrastructure under that road that none of us will have to worry about again. So, hopefully, you know, concrete, that's quite a while. The overall cost of the project, uh, right there, anyway, it's about, our estimate is, uh, from our engineers is, you know, six hundred eighty thousand dollars of that, about five hundred thousand is actually those concrete culverts that go under the road there. So, we're just looking to maybe partner with the county however you guys see fit. I think that maybe a fifty-fifty split was thrown out in the past, but whatever, however you guys see fit. And this, this project isn't gonna happen tomorrow by any means. I think our timeline for construction is probably like summer of two thousand twenty-seven or something to that effect. So, we're just trying to, right now, for the purposes, we're trying to pursue that grant and, uh, for our grant, if we had a partner statement from the county that expressed that you guys would be willing to partner up on that project, it would make our grant look better for application and probably increase our opportunities to get money.
Just a question for engineering possibility. I mean, um, you need to replace it with two, two box culverts right now.
Right.
Of similar volume. I mean, is putting one bigger one in a possibility that, would that be cheaper? I mean, digging's digging there no matter what. And I mean, you guys know the flow of water. I mean, you control that. I mean, would it be s-
What were the, what do you got designed right now? You had, I think you said they were twin ten by sevens, right?
Yes, yep, ten by sevens.
So, I think the largest, you know, we've gotta worry about height.
Yep.
Cover from the road.
It's already a-
And I think the biggest precast box cover span, and I don't know if you guys are doing precast or cat place, but I think the biggest precast right now is, I wanna say fourteen or sixteen feet open span, so we couldn't get something big enough, probably. Well, I don't know if you could or not.
And I mean, I would change your plans for your, uh, control structure.
Your control structure. Are you, you control it through both inlets, I would assume?
Yes, yeah. So, the two box culverts that are there, we use, we put stoplogs in front of them and raise the marsh and lower it annually. Then there is an emergency spillway. Those two other culverts that go under the road in the north, there's two plastic culverts that go through there, so, but, um, yeah, for our purposes, I think we would like to stick with kind of the size that we have here because we're gonna have to lift and lower stoplogs in and out of there and then, you know, the stoplogs are as wide as your culvert basically, so.
Right.
Even at seven feet, that's a pretty big stoplog to take out of there.
I didn't know if they're going to fancy or maybe be able to crank it up and down type of system.
Well, maybe, yeah, I don't know. It hasn't been totally designed yet. It's just kinda preliminary, trying to get numbers in place to, to work with you guys and apply for grants and things of that nature though.
Right now, and I think, I don't wanna narrow it too much, but I know the way those pipe are spaced now, they don't fall into the jurisdiction. I don't believe they fall into the jurisdiction of being a NBI bridge, national bridge.
Oh, sure.
But when you start, if we plonk these together and we're longer than twenty feet, we'll end up having an, an NBI bridge then. So, they'll have to be inspected every two years, but.
I think one time that was a bridge.
Well, it could have been, and then I think one, I'll have to look at our map again, but I don't believe, the way to qualify for an NBI bridge, you have to have enough space, but if you have more space.
You're, you're a kid, but I-
I mean, it would, you're talking thirty-five years ago.
Oh, it would've been when I was really young.
Yeah, our original water control structure there was out in the marsh, like offset from the road and it did not work well. And I think at that time, they partnered with the county to put the, what's in there now.
Put the twin pipe in, yeah. Which would have been, probably be in the late sixties, early seventies was what I would've thought. Probably at the best when they changed that.
So, that, that could play a part.
But anyway.
Once it's, once it's built and we span more than twenty feet, now it becomes a, a structure that needs inspection every two years, but it's gonna be, I mean, I think the reason that bridge was taken out, those pipe were spaced so far apart was to avoid having another, 'cause if you got more than half a diameter of the pipe between the two pipe, then they're standalone individual crossings and they're both nine foot, they don't-
I think they're darn near side by side, I think.
Well, according to what this looks like, there's, there's a, there's a sizable gap in between the two pipe, yeah, so, but I don't know if they show up. I'd have to look at our map again. That's just a side, a side note.
I guess, I mean-
But if you're looking at fiscal twenty-seven, that's a way-
We probably need to look into that first before we can, a hundred percent say, because if it turns into an expense where we've gotta get it inspected every two years, you know, that creates expense for us for ever, the life of the, the life of the culvert boxes, you know?
Well, I know you could take a look too. What do you think, when replacing the wood, you'd be, at some point, they're gonna need to be replaced, there's no doubt. They're getting, if they were put in the sixties or seventies, they're already getting closer to the end of life, I would imagine, unfortunately.
If they were that.
Because they're steel pipe. And, uh, you know, maybe that would, that, there is a pretty good hump over those places now, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't-
Not that that makes a difference, it's not-
I don't know, you and I talked, you've been in them, but I don't know if they're actually, if they've maybe settled on ends or not, or-
I would say so.
They're, they're not probably clean flow lines anymore. Everything settles after time, but.
Yeah, I would say definitely still another to think about it, because when I walked in there, the water wasn't running out, but I needed pretty tall rubber boots and the front ends, you know, the, you know, water's not getting out of it, that's just people's.
Well, that's definitely something to take a look at. We have to figure out, I mean-
And if we're looking at twenty-seven, when do you need a commitment?
Yeah.
To get the grant, I guess?
I think the grants due this summer, so she'll wanna probably be finishing that up before too long, but we could get, our engineers are gonna be up here, Ducks Unlimited is gonna be engineering it. They're gonna be here tomorrow through Thursday, so I could visit with them as far as our, our questions here and try and get something a little more concrete, you know, as far as a plan to you guys, so that you can take a second look at it and see. And then we can also draw up some sort of a letter that you guys could see as what we would be asking for the board to sign off.
Well, and if they're gonna be here, when's, do you think?
That was their plan.
Okay, maybe I could, maybe get ahold of me and I-
Weatherwise, though, yeah.
Right.
I mean, we could, we could make some action on this in the next thirty days.
Yeah.
Decisions on it.
Yeah. But I wanted to have him come in here and kinda explain what the situation was, because we kinda talked about it, um, it was the-
TJ.
TJ was, we were the ones talking about it originally.
Yeah, thinking about expanding the water level at all. Basically, whatever it's banned, it's gonna be for, you know, you're gonna control it for nesting and all, like you have.
Uh, that marsh is managed a little bit different than others in that we manage it annually, so we're already, every year, we take the water out, try to grow vegetation, and there's more of a food source type of wetlands. We try to grow plants in there that provide some food for migrating waterfall. We'll bring it up in the late summer and let the water out now, so that it exposes mud plants and allows that stuff, you know? So, really, that marsh has a lot of water level fluctuation and for the majority of the year, there's almost no water.
Well, last couple of years when it's been dry.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Um, so you did, you did mention too that you've got some more upstream projects possibly coming in the next few years, which would affect a couple of our roads too, just carries, I mean, the only thing, there's two more dam structures above that that are permanent.
Yep. Yep, so on those, really what we're looking at do is, uh, installing catwalks and putting aluminum stoplogs, just kinda updating. Those structures are really solid still.
Because we got twin box culverts, I think, at the next one up, I think, just, that's been done. And the next one up is a bridge, so.
Yep, yep. Both of our structures are kinda offset from the roads in those situations, which is fine. Um, but yeah, that's pretty much, maybe a little bit of channel work in the marshes, some catwalks over the top and aluminum stoplogs, just making it so that we can get in there and work. Um, because right now, you pretty much have to use a boat to get in there. We'd like to get in there while there's still ice on and move some water and so have you, so, and then also, if you have to bring a boat every time you wanna do something, it kinda makes it, you know, a rear.
Structures are old too.
Yeah.
In good shape, but-
A lot of those structures we have that were put in the fifties are really solid structures. They did a good job with concrete and poured a thick at that time, so.
Yeah, they've been in the sixties. My dad, a bunch of the local farmers worked on at least the second one.
Sure, yeah.
Tough times, so they were helping poor country, but, so, no, I just care if it would affect our other bridges, our other roads and culverts and bridges, just makes a little bit of difference here, thinking what you can think about doing. If you can kinda give us an estimated of the end of life on those, which I'd say they were put in in the sixties, that means they're, they got some age on, yeah, that makes a difference, so maybe what we can, can and cannot do, I would say.
Find, and find out on that spacing to keep us out of that bridge.
Well-
See if we can, if, if it is something, we can make it work.
If it is, and I'll, yeah, I'll look into it, but I'm, I'm almost positive it ends up being, because the spans will be beyond the twelve foot, so.
And I can let our engineer know that that's kind of a concern. I'm not super familiar with that, but maybe he is, and, you know, maybe we could-
And I can check into it a little bit more.
Maybe we can-
Pretty sure that's the rule of anything, because we have a lot of, we have box culverts that qualify as bridges, because they are spanning wider than the twelve foot.
Okay. Um, while we got you here, um, cover this on the drainage, that, uh, little issue we had on drainage, um, how was that? Have you been back there to see how it's holding up as far as corrosion or anything?
I have not been back there.
And I mean-
To check it out.
I guess we touched on a little bit. I mean, it would, maybe should put like, I don't wanna call them erosion blankets, but we could put down some kinda, if we needed to.
Sure.
I'd prefer to keep that open, I'm gonna be honest. But I do wanna control the bank erosion and stuff, if we can do that. I could justify that with the landowners versus filling that back in.
Sure.
A little bit to work with you.
Yeah.
So, if you see some of that going and you have some ideas, if we, if the, we'll see how things take off here. Hopefully, we don't get any major rains and wash it out bad, but.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I can understand your perspective. I mean, we're still trying to figure out how do we, we, we would like to see it closed long term. I know we're, we're not on the same page on that deal, but I mean, we're gonna work with you guys however we decide to move forward, you know, however it comes to be, but we'll keep an eye on it for you guys. And, uh, as far as those drainage issues, you know, I mean, if there's an issue on our property, Mark has my number, whether it's the state or federal, you know, you guys can get ahold of-
Well, this one got carried away last fall. I mean, the, they were digging and there was, there was no flow. It was backing up and it was dry last fall, so. They went, they went ahead and I didn't even think about it. I just said, get it open, and it got to be bigger than we thought.
Sure.
I think he thought it was simple until they got going and it got to be a big project, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and in this line of work, we're fifteen years in a very similar landscape. I was over in Spencer before I came here and a lot of experience working with drainage and our ground, and I mean, we gotta, gotta work together and I just, you know, just give me a call if there's a problem. I'm, I wanna make it work for everybody, because that's how I get to work in this county, is to work with you guys too.
Okay, appreciate you talking. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thanks.
Alright. Any change, I guess, today, or we need to take care of it all?
Yeah.
Yeah. Claims? Take a motion, yeah, we got, uh, we gotta do that DD fourteen change on the first, probably.
Let's do that proclamation first, just to get it out of the way before we get it-
Yeah, that was on, yeah, should've been, okay, I will take a motion. We have a motion.
Uh, I'll just amend the, just amend it.
Yeah, take a motion to approve the proclamation.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Moving second. I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this one, Robert.
Aye.
Stone.
Aye.
Smithy, aye. Proclamation, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, back to change order. Let's do the, look at the change order first, so.
There's three from change order, three for the application for training.
Yeah, for all what's going on.
Yeah, I know Jake, if it talked, uh, oh, well, three of us, that last time you was here, maybe, talked about it, or we talked about it down at ISAC on the change order, so, yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable approving the, uh, change order for DD fourteen.
Yeah, take a motion.
I second that.
Moving second to do the change on, change orders on DD fourteen.
And the pay application.
And the pay application. All those payers, aye.
Aye.
At the same time, motion okay. So, we need to send this right here. You want a second? I guess when we're at it, I will take a motion to approve the claims too.
Motion to approve drainage claims?
I'll second that.
Approve discussion. Anyone in all's bear say aye.
Aye.
At the same time, motion okay.
If you guys are still on drainage, I got one thing to talk about too.
Yeah.
So, this is a copy of the map of DD twenty-one's flatland. We got the report from Bolton and Mank. And in the report, it said Worth County didn't take care of it. It's not Worth County's property, first of all, right, guys?
Yeah.
I mean, we've talked about that over and over, that it's not our property.
Yeah.
But they wanna hire us, the district does. I don't know that there's been a meeting to actually try and hire us, but we got set a map. The purple areas are what they want us to disc, spray, seed, and mow. So, if Worth County gets hired to do that, I, the bill's gonna be high. I mean, I mean, but look, when you look at the dots on there, it's, I don't know how you begin to even go about trying to figure out where some of that stuff is. It's easy to walk out there with GPS and put a spot on map, but to go out and actually do the maintenance of it is gonna be extremely time consuming for us, so. If, if we are to be hired in the future here to do this, it's gonna be very costly to the district. I just wanted to make you guys aware of what's going on.
Well, it should be profitable for kind of conservation to go do it. I mean, you'd wanna be using-
Right.
Custom rates and whatever, and you'd have to actually do this by the hour.
Yeah, and this would, this would be by the hour, by the acre, and everything consumable, and so.
You wanna do it? You have time to do it?
Do we wanna do it? We don't wanna do it. I'll be, I'll be completely honest.
You don't have time to do it, though.
We probably could make time to do it, just based on the timeline, because it's, it's late summers when they wanna do stuff.
Alright, let's get, let's get some bids on it, but you get some-
If you guys can't come up with anybody else.
Last resort?
We, you can hire us last resort, but they should know that it's gonna get expensive. I mean, it really is, because when you look at the, the shapes on there, they're not, it's not going out and seeding someone's forty acres. You know, if we go out and seed forty acres, we have an idea ahead of time how much time it's gonna, that we're gonna spend doing that, so we know that we're gonna make money. But this, even building time, I don't feel like, without overcharging, if you're gonna make money because of the back here, not there, yeah, I mean-
Anybody they hire outside of, is gonna do this on a hourly basis and make money out of it.
And I know that, I know the last time, when they hired, whoever they hired to do the seeding and stuff, they weren't happy with them, and they got billed too much, they thought, but the reality is, it's not free. And I, the landowners down there, they have as nice or nicer equipment than we have. They have guidance. We don't, you know, we, we're going in without any of that stuff, just doing it because that's what we do.
I was gonna say, I mean, I would assume these are points, so if you had, you had the proper guidance and knew how to use it, you could go in there and do it.
That's what I assume, but I don't, I have no idea.
I don't either, Jim. It'd be my, I, I'm not that-
But, like I said, I, I just, I was frustrated when I got it, when it says that Worth County neglected it, even, even if it puts it on you guys as the trustees of the district, it wasn't you who neglected it. It was the contractors that they hired before to do the initial work, and then the landowners failing to, if, when the work wasn't getting done, to go out and do it. Because it's their, it's all those guys' property, right? It's the district's property.
DD twenty-one.
So, they have a bunch of areas, you need, you said need to be seeded, is that?
All, uh, everything, everything in purple, everything in purple, everything in purple needs to be disc, sprayed.
So.
Seeded and mowed.
Well, I see, though, how do they, how they got these little purple dots? I mean, you're, you're, this whole thing-
Start over?
I just tried to-
That's not before, and I emailed you guys a few months ago, and I emailed them.
Why wouldn't they, why wouldn't they just do a, a burn and then go and reseed the whole thing?
No, because this is ridiculous.
Well, and you can ask them that when they're here.
Well, like I said, that's, that's, it's just my personal feelings, and, and like I said, I just, I was frustrated when I read it.
Invasive, so how are you gonna go out and control reed canary grass? I mean, you, I'm sure you've dealt with this before, and I mean, I would be like, oh my gosh, I'm trying to figure it, it doesn't give you acre specific here.
It, in the report, it lists out the, how many acres it would be total, and, but again, if that, the, if it was a field, it's different.
Yes.
Than odd shapes and spots.
Well, it's, it's a point of where do you start and stop, but it's probably the same money if you start over.
Right.
To go in there and try to pinpoint everything, and then you're gonna have to have multiple year agreement with whoever you hire, because they're gonna have to come back, check those spots, and if any changes-
And there's actually people that do this, Jim.
That should've happened at the beginning.
There is, I, I don't know if, you know, if, uh, Bradford's son, which I can't-
Judd?
Judd, Judd did it for a while. Um, I don't know if Steve Benson does the seeding. I know that he does a lot of brush removal and stuff like that. There's outfits that NRCS has a co-op.
They got a list, yeah.
AES, I think, is its Applied Ecological Services. I think they do a bunch of custom stuff. I mean, but the thing is, like, with some of these custom outfits, the reason they do it is, it, because they can drag it out through a season, so they might not be here when they want them here. They'll be here when it works in their schedule, when they're in the area, and that's-
Spring.
That's the problem you end up with.
We try to, we'd wanna try to get some local people so that they can hit the timeline, fairly local, I mean, within a decent range.
Do you need a landowner meeting then? Or just RFPs?
I think we just get some proposals on, like, price per hour to go out and correct just this, and then a price for whole works, and we can make that decision. I think if we wait on anything, anybody else, you're gonna be back here again, and this, we need to come up with like a two or three year agreement of going back, double checking, making sure.
Right.
If any touch-up work needs to be done, that's in it too.
That's probably one of these kind of projects where they really need you to manage. I mean, it might be two hours out there, but-
Right, but you gotta do it.
Until it's established.
Or even after it's established. It's a never ending deal. You're gonna have trees coming up, you're gonna have, if you're really managing it, truthfully, like CRP doesn't do it.
But again, you know, we talked about it when that district did this project, that, you know, they were responsible for it. The county's not responsible for it. And, and Justin Faber's one, he just happened to stop in and ask about it, because, you know, he asked about it and he's, it's like, well, Justin, you got the equipment, you can, you can mow if you see it needs mowed. He's, you know, he has other properties similar to this. He knows what needs to be done, but.
There, those guys over there, I, I like them all, but they're, they're too busy. They're not gonna have time.
No, and that, and exactly.
I just know they're not. It's not, so it just gotta, we gotta make, get a list, send it out to two or three different people, get some bids on it, so.
Like I said, you know, last resort, we can, it's gonna be costly, you know?
Yeah, um, but that's what we'll use you guys as a complete last resort.
Right.
Because I don't, like I said, it always, if you're gonna do it, be better, I'll just wanna start over, and then, you know, all of these timelines of things, how's that play out with anybody else, so. Val, would you wanna do that? Better find us some local contractors, if you have talked to NRCS and see what we get, thirty, forty miles around here?
Sure.
And then we'll make something up to send out.
I might have one of you come up and brainstorm with me, have a word with.
I'll come up, good. So, that's fine.
Doesn't have to be today, but maybe this week sometime.
Yep.
Like I said, I didn't, I don't offer a wrench in it, but that's just, that's where we're, we talked about that, and we've had these conversations when people call one of you and ask about hunting there. It's not, it's not public land, it's, that district owns it, so it's their responsibility and not the county's.
Absolutely.
Okay. It's gonna be what it's gonna be. Thanks, Jim.
Claims.
Claims. Take a motion to approve the claims.
Payroll?
Yeah.
I'm gonna approve payroll.
Payroll.
I'll second that.
Moving second, approve the payroll claims. Any further discussion? Anyone in all's bear say aye.
Aye.
At the same time, motion okay.
Get this resolution out of the way next.
Okay. Resolution twenty-two, five-ten, resolution canceled, automatic renewal.
People's service.
For people's services. Whereas Worth County, Iowa, the owner who had, whose address is one thousandth Century Avenue, Northwood, Iowa, five oh four five nine, and People's Service Incorporated as his successor and assigning, whose address is two oh nine South Nineteenth Street, Suite five five five, Omaha, Nebraska. Entered into the operation and maintenance agreement dated twelve twenty-seven, two thousand eleven, and renewed on six five of seventeen, and six twenty-seven of twenty-two. Whereas pursuant to the terms in Article Five of the agreement, the agreement shall remain in force until the, until the effect, until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Agreement shall automatically renew for successive terms of two years each unless the written notice of cancellation is given by either party to the other, no less than ninety days prior to the date of expiration. Now therefore, it is resolved that the owner shall exercise his right to cancel the automatic renewal pursuant to the terms in Article Five of this agreement effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Auditor is hereby directed to send written notice to the president of People's Service, advising them Worth, Worth County is exercising their right as referenced above. Alright, I will take a motion to approve the resolution for automatic, cancel automatic renewal.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? I will second. Any further discussion? Okay, we will do a roll call vote.
Are you abstaining then officially?
He will. He can do it during, yeah. Robert.
Aye.
Stone.
Abstain.
Smithy, aye. The resolution will pass.
We could probably do this really short and sweet.
Simple ways.
So, if you look at that, there's seven hundred and three total votes.
Yep.
This is all the counties together. Um, it's, there was four hundred and sixty-one yes votes, two hundred and forty-two no votes.
Yep.
And, um, everything was, or it is approved. So, all we had was Central Springs for this one. The other stuff I sent to Mitchell County because it's for St. Ansker, and she's the person for that one, so that's all we got.
Just make a motion to approve the canvas, alright?
Yes, please.
I'll motion to approve the, uh, Central Springs canvas.
I'll second it.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Anyone in all's bear say aye.
Aye.
At the same time, motion okay.
Unless you can live through your supervisor, please.
Yeah, we can do supervisor, he's quick.
Uh, I had partners for children and because of the way it's billing and that kinda stuff, we didn't have much to do there as far as the financials went, and there is no updates from the state on anything, and then I went to the ISAC, and, uh-
And then I went to the ISAC and got a little bid on TIF and basically we're in a holding pattern. So.
Um, all they had was ISAC last week as well, set through the TIF discussion, stability in our meetings. And then there's some tax, taxation discussion on this new tax bill that may or may not flop seven eighteen. So we're kind of stuck waiting to get more info on that and see what, how that's all gonna play out. That's all I had last week.
Uh, I just had one big watershed last week. Um, election officers going through things, make sure we got our, our draft, but we got away from the official announcement on that, so we'll be able to start moving ahead with stuff and do that. Um, I guess that's all I had, so. So we have nothing else then on the agenda? You're saying no cleaning reports, liquor, payroll, buildings, we're good, department ads, is there anything? Anybody has anything? Quick. Okay, good. Everybody good? If not, we're gonna take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Melissa sent us that email on the forum.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's on there.
I got it on there. I did remember that.
Yeah, I seen you had it on there. I just didn't know what she wanted.
Oh, Melissa, you want to go quick?
Sure. Did you guys skip me or did I not hear you guys calling me?
Trying to finish up here for drainage.
Okay, all right. Uh, I set up the forum and it's on Saturday and Dennis from the, uh, Extension Office will be taking my place as a host for that day, so I am grateful to him for that. And then tomorrow I have um, one of the last few meetings for the housing conference in Mason City next month.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions, guys?
No.
No.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Matt, take a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
I'll second. Moving second, any further discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
Don't move.